We're going to wait a couple minutes because I understand the lines out the door. Someone's shocking, but that's nice. So I do want to give the people that are in line a chance to settle in. Procedurally, tonight's going to be a little different in the sense that we're going to group a couple of articles together that have the same exact purpose here. If you had a chance to look at the warrant, there's one of them that's accepting roles. And they're all under the same law, so we're going to try to group them together when the time comes. If anybody has any particular questions or wants to raise any topics on a particular street, we can address them individually, or we will try to lump those together. And that would be Articles 23 through 34, I believe, in the annual town meeting. And there'll be a motion made to that. So if you can just hold tight for a couple minutes, we'll start the special town meeting first. Thank you. We're not sitting idly by. I'm going to read the nonresidents to read every meeting, though the nonresidents that appear here for various reasons. Michelle Dahl, Rebecca Johnson, Charlie Seale, Wes Hannigan, Alex Welsh, Jean Marie Joyce, Chris Kenny, John Clifford, Jessica Henderson, Megan Crosby, Paula Wolf, Ryan McGonagall, Patrick Franny, Elizabeth Lagal, Michael Cornell J. Power, Congressman Lynch, thanks for coming again, and his aide, and I apologize if I don't say it right, Kayana Adakwa. Thank you both for coming. And for those here, if you would mind standing and join me in the pledge allegiance to the flag, it's to my right. Pledge allegiance. Thank you. We are. All right. We're not sitting idly by. I'm going to read the nonresidents to read every meeting, though the nonresidents that appear here for various reasons. Michelle Dahl, Rebecca Johnson, Charlie Seale, Wes Hannigan, Alex Welsh, Jean Marie Joyce, Chris Kenny, John Clifford, Jessica Henderson, Megan Crosby, Paula Wolf, Ryan McGonagall, Patrick Franny, Elizabeth Lagal, Michael Cornell J. Power, Congressman Lynch, thanks for coming again, and his aide, and I apologize if I don't say it right, Kayana Adakwa. Thank you both for coming. And for those here, if you would mind standing and join me in the pledge allegiance to the flag, it's to my right. Pledge allegiance. Thank you. We are. All right. My understanding is the line has diminished, but we're going to start by having Ms. Patrick read the warrant, our town clerk. This will be for the special town meeting.
Plymouth County, to any constables of the town of East Bridgewater and San County of Plymouth, Commonwealth of Massachusetts, greetings. In the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are hereby directed to notify and warn the inhabitants of the town of East Bridgewater, who being qualified to vote in elections and town affairs, to meet at the junior senior high school, 143 Plymouth Street, in said East Bridgewater, on Monday, May 8th, Monday, the 8th day of May, 2023, at 7:00 p.m., then and there, to act upon the enclosed articles to wit. In case all articles in the foregoing warrant shall not be acted upon at the meeting called for Monday, May 8, 2023, to meet in adjourned session at such time and place as the meeting shall determine. You are directed to serve this warrant by posting a copy thereof attested by you in writing in each of the public places in the town at least 14 days before the time of holding the meeting called for in the warrant. Therefore, fail not, and make due return of this warrant with your doings thereon to the town clerk of said town, honor before the 20th day of April 23, given under our hands, the 20th day of April, in the year of our Lord, 2023, the Board of Selectmen.
Thank you, Ms. Patrick. Congressman Lynch, would you like to address the board for a couple minutes? I have done this in the past. He makes an effort to come here, and as I said to him, you don't have to agree with him or not, but he always comes, and he's one of the few federal officials that we've had. So thank you for coming.
Thank you. Good evening. It's an honor for me to be here. I know that there are two warrants tonight. You've got a lot of work to do, so I will make my remarks brief. I'm happy to report that as a result of the federal funding from the CARES Act and the American Rescue Plan Act, we were able to direct 2.17 million in federal funding to East Bridgewater from the Federal CARES Act. And that was just to deal with the added expense that East Bridgewater had with the health-related impacts of the pandemic. Added masks and other materials for public safety, for the police and fire, things like that, stuff for the schools. And then there was an additional $2.6 million from the Federal American Rescue Plan Act. And that was to compensate the town of East Bridgewater for the economic impact, because tax revenue dropped, because there were, you know, less people going out to dinner, less meals taxed, things like that, coming into the town. So what we tried to do is to replace what the town of East Bridgewater would have received but for the impact of the pandemic. So it came to a total of $4.77 million, again, which is to defray some of the COVID-related expenses incurred by the town and the loss of revenue. I want to thank our Plymouth County Treasurer, Tom O'Brien, and the Plymouth County Commissioners, who did a great job on that as well. There was a lot of bureaucracy getting the money from Washington to the town, and the county was very, very helpful in that, helped us negotiate a lot of that. We also have an ongoing process with the federal infrastructure bill. That was a $1.2 trillion bill that was meant to fund infrastructure, roads, bridges, waters, water systems, things like that, all across the country. At that time, I was, as a member of the Transportation Committee, we were a part of that process. And to date, our state, you know, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts will receive $8.5 billion over five years. But right now, the state has received $3.7 billion in funding, and will receive another $5 billion about, over the next few years, for basic infrastructure. Massachusetts has some of the oldest infrastructure in the country, and a lot of that is for transportation and climate change resiliency projects. I know we've had some flooding issues in this area, and it'll go to dredging, and not only for ponds, but also the rivers as well, as a lot of the coastal communities as well. So over the next five years, our state will receive in total $5.4 billion for roads, $2.8 billion to modernize transit, some of that is electric buses, some of it's rail, and $1.4 billion to improve our water infrastructure. We'll also receive a record $1.1 billion for a special bridge program. We've got 472 bridges. I'm an old ironworker. I was an ironworker for about 20 years, so we've got about 472 bridges that are in deficient condition. So some of them might be four-lane bridges, but two of them are closed down, two lanes are closed down because they can't handle the dynamic loading. But we'll be able to work on a lot of those bridges and get them back online. Right now, currently in Congress, the top issue we have, the most pressing issue we have, is raising the debt limit. And the debt limit just allows us to pay our bills. So it isn't about new funding, it's about past bills that have been incurred, and by raising the debt limit, it allows us to pay those bills. If we don't do so, I just want to, you know, you hear a lot of this on the radio and TV, and you don't understand what the impact is to East Bridgewater. So in our congressional district, which is about 18 towns and three cities, I got Boston, Brockton, and Quincy, and then there's 18 towns, including East Bridgewater, we've got about, I would say, 86,000 residents who rely on social security for a good part of their income. So if we don't pass the debt limit, it stops the government from paying its bills, and that's one of its responsibilities. So it puts all those people on social security at risk. In addition, you've got about a quarter of a million people, and I'm just talking about our district, that rely on either Medicare or Medicaid. I've got thousands and thou, I've got three VA hospitals in my district. And we have all those veterans, a lot of them rely on VA healthcare. So if we don't, if we don't come together, and we're having a fight now between Republicans and Democrats, and we've got to come together on this, because people that have served this country, their benefits are at risk. So we better damn well get smart here in a hurry and pass this debt limit, because we don't want them to suffer because of our inability to get the job done in Washington, D.C. So that has to happen in the next, they've given us a date of June 1st, I think, before we get to what they call X date, and we can't meet all of our obligations. It'll also throw the economy into a real tailspin here, and we certainly don't need that right now. It involves, it'll lower our debt rating, so we'll have to pay more for any debt that we incur. It'll increase the amount of unemployment. A lot of these federal jobs will close down, those bridge jobs and those projects I just talked about. So we've got a responsibility to the people that we represent. Look, I just want to thank you. You know, town meeting is the essence of democracy. This is, this is where I get my orders, from town meeting. And this is where you provide direction to me on what you'd like to see in Washington, D.C. Now, I know you have very high expectations. I understand that. You know, East Bridgewater is a shining example of what's best about America. I see the way you treat your kids. I had a nephew here, Kevin Lynch, who was a big football star here a few years ago, my cousin Kevin's kid. And, you know, I got to go to all of his games, and I saw the way the people of East Bridgewater support the Vikings and support all the kids from this town. I see the way that you take care of your seniors, and that's noble. It's wonderful to see that seniors are being treated with the respect that they deserve. And I see the way you treat your veterans. And nobody treats their veterans better than the town of East Bridgewater. And you honor their service each and every day by the dignity that you show them and the way you treat them. So I'm honored to represent East Bridgewater in the United States Congress. I struggle every day to try to meet those high expectations that you have for all of your elected officials. I'm just one member of the East Bridgewater delegation. You know, we have a great Board of Selectmen and Town Administrator. You've got a great moderator here. We're all pulling in the same direction. And I know that our state representatives and state senators are also very much engaged, you know, with the process of making sure that state government, federal government, and local government work together. So God bless the town of East Bridgewater. Thank you for your involvement in town meeting, and may God continue to bless these United States of America. Thank you.
Thank you, Congressman Lynch. Now we'll get to the how-do-the-matter. So in the special town meeting, I, what's going to happen here, I'm going to entertain a motion to table Articles 1, 2, 7, and 9. And they're going to be put over to our, we're going to continue the, town meeting's going to be in two parts here. We're going to have tonight, and then this body votes to what they call lay on the table those articles, we're going to carry them over to June 5. So will I have a motion from the Board of Selectmen to do so?
It's moved.
You have to make a motion, then somebody else moves it.
Who's doing that?
I can't make the motion.
I'll make the motion.
Mr. Spargone made the motion to table Articles 1, 2, 7, and 9. Do I have a second?
Second.
For discussion, if any, Mr. Spargone.
No, I stated.
Okay. Any further discussion on Article 1, which actually takes 1, 2, 7, and 9? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion to table Articles 1, 2, 7, and 9, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Article 3 passes. Article 4, Chief Hare.
I move that the town vote to appropriate transfer from account number 1-220-510-5132 to a following accounts, the total of $98,500. Transfer $31,100 to cover vacation, $17,500 to cover additional compensation, cover OJI on the job injury. Transfer $31,000 to additional compensation, other. Transfer $8,900 to supplies in ones, and transfer $10,000 to cover sec.
Motion right second. Motion made second. Chief Hare for discussion, if any.
Yeah, this is due, I have multiple long-term job injuries this year, we had to, for multiple long-term illnesses, several firefighters that had to attend the Mass Fire Academy, so in order to keep appropriate staff in rural area.
Thank you. Any further discussion on Article 4 is presented? Seeing none, all in favor of Article 4, let's say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Article 5 passes. Article 5, Chief Hare.
I move that the town vote to appropriate transfer from account number 1-220-510-5132 to permanent fire salaries to the following accounts, the total of $98,500. Transfer $31,100 to cover vacation, $17,500 to cover additional compensation, cover OJI on the job injury. Transfer $31,000 to additional compensation, other. Transfer $8,900 to supplies in ones, and transfer $10,000 to cover sec.
Motion right second. Motion made second. Chief Hare for discussion, if any.
Yeah, this is due, I have multiple long-term job injuries this year, we had to, for multiple long-term illnesses, several firefighters that had to attend the Mass Fire Academy, so in order to keep appropriate staff in rural area.
Thank you. Any further discussion on Article 4 is presented? Seeing none, all in favor of Article 4, let's say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Article 5 passes. Article 5, Chief Hare.
I move that the town vote to appropriate transfer from account number 1-220-510-5132 to permanent fire salaries to the following accounts, the total of $98,500. Transfer $31,100 to cover vacation, $17,500 to cover additional compensation, cover OJI on the job injury. Transfer $31,000 to additional compensation, other. Transfer $8,900 to supplies in ones, and transfer $10,000 to cover sec.
Motion right second. Motion made second. Chief Hare for discussion, if any.
Yeah, this is due, I have multiple long-term job injuries this year, we had to, for multiple long-term illnesses, several firefighters that had to attend the Mass Fire Academy, so in order to keep appropriate staff in rural area.
Thank you. Any further discussion on Article 4 is presented? Seeing none, all in favor of Article 4, let's say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Article 5 passes. Article 5, Chief Hare.
I move that the town vote to appropriate transfer from account number 1-220-510-5132 to permanent fire salaries to the following accounts, the total of $98,500. Transfer $31,100 to cover vacation, $17,500 to cover additional compensation, cover OJI on the job injury. Transfer $31,000 to additional compensation, other. Transfer $8,900 to supplies in ones, and transfer $10,000 to cover sec.
Motion right second. Motion made second. Chief Hare for discussion, if any.
Yeah, this is due, I have multiple long-term job injuries this year, we had to, for multiple long-term illnesses, several firefighters that had to attend the Mass Fire Academy, so in order to keep appropriate staff in rural area.
Thank you. Any further discussion on Article 4 is presented? Seeing none, all in favor of Article 4, let's say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Article 5 passes. Article 5, Chief Hare.
I move that the town vote to appropriate transfer from account number 1-220-510-5132 to permanent fire salaries to the following accounts, the total of $98,500. Transfer $31,100 to cover vacation, $17,500 to cover additional compensation, cover OJI on the job injury. Transfer $31,000 to additional compensation, other. Transfer $8,900 to supplies in ones, and transfer $10,000 to cover sec.
Motion right second. Motion made second. Chief for discussion, if any.
It's written in the law, but just briefly, so years ago, the police and fire bought a radio system, the police went digital, we did not. We still have some dead spots in town. This is to take our channel and make it a digital channel that the DPW currently owns. We're going to keep our original channel as well. We all operate off the same tower, police and fire, West Bridgewater. This will give a transmit-receive site in East Bridgewater, so if one of the towers goes down, we don't lose radio communications. And we've tested this digital radio to its extremes, and there's no loss of coverage anywhere in town, including the basins of people's houses, so it's kind of a life safety issue for my firefighters.
Thank you, Chief. Any further discussion on Articles 5 is presented? Seeing none, all in favor of Article 5 is presented, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Article 5 passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Article 6, Mr. Kylie, Facilities Manager.
I move that the town vote to consolidate and repurpose the following articles totaling $31,901.54 and transfer to account 1-191-5999-5241 for unexpected maintenance repairs for the central school. From account 1-301-1023-5601, playground fence, the amount of $25,000. From account 1-301-1023-5617, gym floor overweight, the amount of $1,634. From account 1-301-1023-5600, central school filing, $3,033.25. And from account 1-301-1023-5241, steam traps, the amount of $2,234.29.
Just clarification, Brian. I think you gave the wrong figure. You're looking to repurpose $51,000, right?
I was looking at, actually, I should have started with a motion to adjust the article. The first weatherization account, that zero, the account balance, there is zero, so I was removing that number.
So we're taking, Mr. Seale, I want to get this clarified, because it's different than what we have on my book. Mr. Seale?
So Brian is saying that of the five accounts that are listed in the warrant, the first one, actually, we don't have the money in that account. So what he's done is adjusted the total to equal the second, third, fourth, and fifth line items.
All right.
Those are the amounts going to be moved. The new total is the total of the second, third, fourth, and fifth line items.
So I think we need to clarify this. So I think what we need to do, we need to amend the article, Mr. Kylie, amend the article to your figure, because everybody else has a different figure. So we, our, my motion still has the $51,000. So I think you need to make a motion to amend the article, to use that new $31,000 figure, and then eliminate that weatherization, because everybody's book says $51,000.
Okay.
So I will entertain a motion for you to amend it to give the figure that you gave.
I'd like to amend.
So what's the figure?
Article 6 to read $31,901.54 and remove the weatherization account.
All right. So what we have to do is, you made a motion to amend. Is there any discussion? Do I need a second?
Second.
It's unnecessary for you. Any discussion on that? Because right now, we have to vote to allow the amendment. Seeing this, all in favor of allowing him to amend the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Now we're going to vote on the figure. I think you, I think you don't need to present anything else, do you?
No.
Any further discussion? All right. Any further discussion on Article 6 as amended? So instead of 51,764.40, and correct me if I'm wrong, 31,901.54?
Correct.
So that's the figure, and we're eliminating the first account number that deals with weatherization.
Yes.
Any further discussion on that? Seeing none, all in favor of Article 6 as amended, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Article 6 passes as amended.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Kylie. Article 7 has been moved, so we're now dealing with Article 8. Mr. Jenkins, Acting Police Chief. You're in the spotlight, Mike.
Yeah, there you go. Mr. Marty, I move that the town vote to transfer from account number 1-210-510-5124 court prosecutor salary to account number 1-210-520-5193, uniform expenses, the amount of $10,000, and to 1-210-520-5247 repair and maintain vehicles, the amount of $22,000.
Have a motion right second. Motion made second. Mr. Jenkins, for discussion, if any.
Not unless there's any questions.
Thank you. Any further discussion on Article 8 is presented? Seeing none, all in favor of Article 8 is presented, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Article 8 passes. As amended.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Kylie. Article 7 has been moved, so we're now dealing with Article 8. Mr. Jenkins, Acting Police Chief. You're in the spotlight, Mike.
Yeah, there you go. Mr. Marty, I move that the town vote to transfer from account number 1-210-510-5124 court prosecutor salary to account number 1-210-520-5193, uniform expenses, the amount of $10,000, and to 1-210-520-5247 repair and maintain vehicles, the amount of $22,000.
Have a motion right second. Motion made second. Mr. Jenkins, for discussion, if any.
Not unless there's any questions.
Thank you. Any further discussion on Article 8 is presented? Seeing none, all in favor of Article 8 is presented, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Article 8 passes as amended.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Kylie. Article 7 has been moved, so we're now dealing with Article 8. Mr. Jenkins, Acting Police Chief. You're in the spotlight, Mike.
Yeah, there you go. Mr. Marty, I move that the town vote to transfer from account number 1-210-510-5124 court prosecutor salary to account number 1-210-520-5193, uniform expenses, the amount of $10,000, and to 1-210-520-5247 repair and maintain vehicles, the amount of $22,000.
Have a motion right second. Motion made second. Mr. Jenkins, for discussion, if any.
Not unless there's any questions.
Thank you. Any further discussion on Article 8 is presented? Seeing none, all in favor of Article 8 is presented, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Article 8 passes as amended.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Kylie. Article 7 has been moved, so we're now dealing with Article 8. Mr. Jenkins, Acting Police Chief. You're in the spotlight, Mike.
Yeah, there you go. Mr. Marty, I move that the town vote to transfer from account number 1-210-510-5124 court prosecutor salary to account number 1-210-520-5193, uniform expenses, the amount of $10,000, and to 1-210-520-5247 repair and maintain vehicles, the amount of $22,000.
Have a motion right second. Motion made second. Mr. Jenkins, for discussion, if any.
Not unless there's any questions.
Thank you. Any further discussion on Article 8 is presented? Seeing none, all in favor of Article 8 is presented, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Article 8 passes as amended.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Kylie. Article 7 has been moved, so we're now dealing with Article 8. Mr. Jenkins, Acting Police Chief. You're in the spotlight, Mike.
Yeah, there you go. Mr. Marty, I move that the town vote to transfer from account number 1-210-510-5124 court prosecutor salary to account number 1-210-520-5193, uniform expenses, the amount of $10,000, and to 1-210-520-5247 repair and maintain vehicles, the amount of $22,000.
Have a motion right second. Motion made second. Mr. Jenkins, for discussion, if any.
Not unless there's any questions.
Thank you. Any further discussion on Article 8 is presented? Seeing none, all in favor of Article 8 is presented, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Article 8 passes. As amended.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Kylie. Article 7 has been moved, so we're now dealing with Article 8. Mr. Jenkins, Acting Police Chief. You're in the spotlight, Mike.
Yeah, there you go. Mr. Marty, I move that the town vote to transfer from account number 1-210-510-5124 court prosecutor salary to account number 1-210-520-5193, uniform expenses, the amount of $10,000, and to 1-210-520-5247 repair and maintain vehicles, the amount of $22,000.
Have a motion right second. Motion made second. Mr. Jenkins, for discussion, if any.
It's due to orders and sixty coverage through the multiple unexpected illnesses due to this year.
Thank you. Any further discussion on Article 3 as presented? Seeing none, all in favor of Article 3 is presented, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Article 3 passes. Article 4, Chief Hare.
I move that the town vote to appropriate transfer from account number 1-220-510-5132 permanent fire salaries to the following accounts, the total of $98,500. Transfer $31,100 to cover vacation, $17,500 to cover additional compensation, cover OJI on the job injury. Transfer $31,000 to additional compensation, other. Transfer $8,900 to supplies in ones, and transfer $10,000 to cover sec.
Have a motion right second. Motion made second. Chief Hare for discussion, if any.
Yeah, this is due, I have multiple long-term job injuries this year, we had to, for multiple long-term illnesses, several firefighters that had to attend the Mass Fire Academy, so in order to keep appropriate staff in rural area.
Thank you. Any further discussion on Article 4 is presented? Seeing none, all in favor of Article 4 is presented, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Article 5 passes. Article 4, Chief Hare.
I move that the town vote to appropriate transfer from account number 1-220-510-5132 permanent fire salaries to the following accounts, the total of $98,500. Transfer $31,100 to cover vacation, $17,500 to cover additional compensation, cover OJI on the job injury. Transfer $31,000 to additional compensation, other. Transfer $8,900 to supplies in ones, and transfer $10,000 to cover sec.
Have a motion right second. Motion made second. Chief for discussion, if any.
Yeah, this is due, I have multiple long-term job injuries this year, we had to, for multiple long-term illnesses, several firefighters that had to attend the Mass Fire Academy, so in order to keep appropriate staff in rural area.
Thank you. Any further discussion on Article 4 is presented? Seeing none, all in favor of Article 4, let's say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Article 5 passes. Article 4, Chief Hare.
And may God continue to bless these United States of America. Thank you.
Thank you Congressman Lynch. Now we'll get to the how do the matter. So in the special town meeting, what's going to happen here, I'm going to entertain a motion to table articles one, two, seven, and nine. And they're going to be put over to our, we're going to continue the, town meeting is going to be in two parts here. We're going to have tonight, and then this body votes to what they call lay on the table those articles, we're going to carry them over to June 5th. So will I have a motion from the board of selectmen to do so?
It's all moved.
You have to make a motion, then somebody else moves it.
Who's doing that?
I can't make the motion.
I'll make the motion.
Mr. Spigot made the motion to table articles one, two, seven, and nine. Do I have a second?
Second.
For discussion if any, Mr. Spigot.
No, I stated.
Okay. Any further discussion on Article One, which actually takes one, two, seven, and nine? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion to table articles one, two, seven, nine, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. So now we go to Article Three. Chief Hare from the Fire Department.
Mr. Moderator, I move at the town vote to appropriate transfer from account number two-two-dash-two-three-one-dash-eight-three-five-dash-four-two-seven-zero ambulance receipts reserved for appropriation to account number one-dash-two-two-zero-five-one-one-five-one-four-zero sixty coverage in the amount of twenty thousand dollars.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made seconded. Chief Hare for discussion if any?
This is due to the owners of sixty coverage through the multiple unexpected illnesses to the first year.
Thank you. Any further discussion on Article Three as presented? Seeing none, all in favor of Article Three as presented, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Article Three passes. Article Four, Chief Hare.
I move the town vote to appropriate transfer from account number one-dash-two-two-zero five-one-zero-five-one-three-two permanent fire salaries to the following accounts, the total of ninety-eight thousand five hundred dollars. Transfer thirty-one thousand one hundred to cover vacation, seventeen thousand five hundred to cover additional compensation to cover OJI on the job injury. Transfer thirty-one thousand to additional compensation other. Transfer eight thousand nine hundred dollars to supplies in loans, and transfer ten thousand dollars to cover sick.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made seconded. Chief Hare for discussion if any?
Yeah, this is due to, I had multiple long-term job injuries this year. We had two, uh, three, uh, multiple long-term illnesses, several firefighters that had to attend the Mass Fire Academy, so in order to keep appropriate staff in rural area.
Thank you. Any further discussion on Article Four as presented? Seeing none, all in favor of Article Four, let's say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Article Five passes. Chief Hare.
I move the town vote to appropriate and transfer from account number two-two-two-three-one-eight-three-five-four-two-seven-zero ambulance receipts reserved for appropriation to account number one-dash-two-two-zero-six-zero-zero-five-five-eight-five-zero new equipment for fire power greater system upgrade, the amount of ninety-four thousand six hundred and sixty-seven dollars.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made seconded. Chief for discussion if any?
It's written in the law, but just briefly, so years ago, the police and fire powered radio system, the police went digital, we did not. We have, still have some dead spots in town. This is to take our channel, make it a digital channel that the DPW currently owns. We're going to keep our original channel as well. We all operate off the same tower, police and fire, West Bridgewater. This will give a transmit receive site in East Bridgewater, so if one of the towers goes down, we don't lose radio communications. And we've tested this digital radio to its extremes, and there's no loss of coverage anywhere in town, including the basins of people's houses. So it's kind of a life safety issue for my firefighters.
Thank you, Chief. Any further discussion on Articles Five as presented? Seeing none, all in favor of Article Five as presented, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Article Five passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Article Six, Mr. Kylie, Facilities Manager.
I move that the town vote to consolidate and repurpose the following articles totaling thirty-one thousand nine hundred and one dollars and fifty-four cents and transfer to account one, one-nine-one-five-nine-nine-nine-five-two-four-one for unexpected maintenance repairs for the central school. From account one, three-oh-one, one-oh-two-three-five-six-oh-one playground fence, the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars. From account one, three-oh-one, ten-twenty-three-five-six-one-seven gym floor overweight, the amount of one thousand six hundred and thirty-four dollars. From account one, three-oh-one, one-oh-two-three-five-six-zero-zero central school filing, three thousand thirty-three dollars and twenty-five cents. And from account one, three-oh-one, one-oh-two-three-five-two-four-one steam traps, the amount of two thousand two hundred and thirty-four dollars and twenty-nine cents.
Just clarification, Brian. I think you gave the wrong figure. Mike, you're looking to repurpose fifty-one thousand, right?
Well, I was looking at, actually, I should have started with a motion to adjust the article. The first weatherization account, that zero, the account, the account balance there is zero, so I was removing that, that number.
So we're, so we're taking, Mr. Seelick, I want to get this clarified because it's different than what we have on my book.
Yes.
Mr. Seelick.
So Brian is saying that, that out of the five accounts that are listed in the warrant, the first one, actually, we don't have the money in that account. So what he's done is adjusted the total to equal the second, third, fourth, and fifth line items.
All right.
Those are the amounts going to be moved. The new total is the total of the second, third, fourth, and fifth line items.
So I think we need to clarify this. So I think what we need to do, that we need to amend the article, Mr. Kylie, amend the article to your figure, because everybody else has a different figure. So we, our, my motion still has the fifty-one thousand. So I think you need to make a motion to amend the article, to use that new thirty-one thousand figure, and then eliminate that weatherization, because everybody's book says fifty-one thousand.
Okay.
So I will entertain a motion for you to amend it to give the figure that you gave.
I'd like to amend.
So what's the figure?
Article Six to read thirty-one thou, uh, thirty-one thousand nine hundred and one dollars and fifty-four cents, and remove the weatherization account.
All right. So, so what we have to do is he made a motion to amend. Is there any discussion, do I need, I need a second?
Second.
Uh, it's unnecessary for you. Any discussion on that? Because right now, we have to vote to allow the amendment. Seeing this, all in favor of him to amend the motion, say aye?
Aye.
All right. Now we're going to vote on the figure. I think you've, I think you don't need to present anything else, do you?
No.
Any further discussion? All right. Um, any further discussion on Article Six as amended? So instead of fifty-one-seven-six-four-point-four-oh, and correct me if I'm wrong, thirty-one-nine-zero-one-point-five-four?
Correct.
So that's the figure, and we're eliminating the first account number that deals with weatherization.
Yes.
Any further discussion on that? Seeing none, all in favor of Article Six as amended, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Article Six passes as amended.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Kylie. Article Seven has been moved, so we're now dealing with Article Eight. Mr. Jenkins, Acting Police Chief. You're in the spotlight, Mike.
Yeah, there you go. Mr. Moderator, I move at the town vote to transfer from account number one-dash-two-ten-five-ten-fifty-one-twenty-four court prosecutor's salary to account number one-dash-two-ten-five-twenty-five-one-nine-three, uniform expenses, the amount of ten thousand, and to one-dash-two-ten-five-twenty-five-two-four-seven repair and maintain vehicles, the amount of twenty-two thousand.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made seconded. Mr. Jenkins for discussion if any?
None, unless there's any questions.
Thank you. Any further discussion on Article Eight as presented? Seeing none, all in favor of Article Eight as presented, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? And the command is passed over, so I will entertain a motion to continue this special meeting until June 5th.
Uh, time.
Oh. No, you can't make the, someone has to make the.
I know that, but I'm just pointing that out.
Someone has to make the motion to continue.
So move.
So move, second?
What time?
All in favor? So now we'll go to the annual town meeting.
Uh, you have to be the one.
And the clerk will be the one.
Plymouth County, to many of the constables of the town of East Bridgewater and said county of Plymouth, Commonwealth of Massachusetts, greetings. In the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are hereby directed to notify and warn the inhabitants of the town of East Bridgewater, who will be disqualified to vote in elections and town affairs, to meet at the junior senior high school, one forty-three Plymouth Street in said East Bridgewater, on Monday, the eighth of May, two oh, uh, two thousand twenty-three at seven P.M., then and there to act upon the enclosed articles to wit. In case all articles in the foregoing warrant shall not be acted upon at the meeting called for on Monday, May eighth, two thousand twenty-three, to meet in an adjourned session at such time and place as the meeting shall determine. You are directed to serve this warrant by posting a copy thereof, attested by you in writing, in each of the six places in the town, and at least seven days before the time of the holding of the meeting called for on the warrant. Therefore, fail not, and make due return of this warrant with your doings thereon to the town clerk in said town on or before the twentieth day of April, two thousand twenty-three. Given under our hands this twentieth day of April, near our Lord, two thousand twenty-three, the Board of Selectmen.
Thank you, Ms. Kilpatrick. So this one's going to be similar to the last one. We're going to try to, some articles are going to be moved. And we also have what they call consent agenda, which the state allowed a few years ago. And so Article One, Ms. Julius.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to take out of order Articles One, Five, and Seven, that they be passed by consent in accordance with the most enshown on the two thousand twenty-three East Bridgewater Annual Town Meeting Consent Agenda distributed to town meeting attendees this evening.
Motion, do I have a second? For discussion, Ms. Julius, if any?
No discussion.
All right. So the purpose of this, obviously, these are standard articles we have every year. The state has allowed them to be put together. So I have a motion to approve Articles One, Five, Seven. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of Article One as presented, which includes One, Five, and Seven, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Now, I will entertain a motion from the Board of Selectmen to table, I hope I get this right, Articles Two, Three, Four, Eight, Nine, Ten, Twelve, Sixteen, and Thirty-Five. How's the annual town meeting? Do I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Motion made by Mr. Spigot, do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have a motion, do I have a second? Mr. Spigot for discussion if any? So this again, as you look at it, you'll notice these are articles that deal with the budget and whatnot, and they just haven't, it's just not fully prepared yet. So we have the same motion to table this. This will require two-thirds of the other one deal, which I declared unanimous. Do I have any discussion from anybody on this, on this motion to table those articles? Mr. Whitefeller?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Not seeing any further discussion, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? I'm going to declare that unanimous. So now we're going to be doing, we're on to Article Eleven in your warrant. Now I'm going to turn the board of selectmen, they can tell me who's going to do it, because we've gone through this. Mrs. Spigot?
Six? Hold on, we have some questions.
Yes?
Um, Article Six, it's being passed over, and people are questioning that.
Oh, you know what? That is on my list. I probably thank you. So that's yours. So, so Article Six, uh, we need a motion passed over, I believe. Mr. Sheedy, you were going to make that, you were going to address Article Six. Thank you.
Make a motion to pass over Article Six.
Mr. Moderator, I make a motion to pass over Article Six.
I have a motion to pass over Article Six, do I have a second?
Sure.
Motion made seconded. Any further discussion on passing over Article Six? This means it comes off the table. And if you read that, it's already been done. Seeing no further discussion, all in favor of passing over Article Six as presented, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Article Six pass over. Thank you. Now we can go to Article.
Eleven.
Eleven.
Mr. Moderator, through you, I move that the town vote to accept provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter Forty-four, Section Fifty-three F and a half of the Massachusetts General Laws establishing North Bedford Street Sewer District as an enterprise fund effective July first, two thousand twenty-four.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made seconded. Mrs. Spigot for discussion if any?
Uh, this is just to, that we have a established fund in order to move proceeds from our Route Eighteen project into, uh, into an enterprise fund.
Thank you. Any further discussion on Article Eleven as presented? Seeing none, all in favor of Article Eleven as presented, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Article Eleven passes. Article Thirteen. Chief Hare.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to appropriate and transfer from the sum of one hundred and thirty-three thousand six hundred and nine dollars and fifty-five cents from account number two-two-two-three-one-eight-three-five-four-two-seven-zero ambulance receipts reserved for appropriation to account number eight-two-one-two-two-nine-one-one-four-nine-seven-two capital stabilization.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made seconded. Chief for discussion if any?
This is the fourth of fifth repayments from the ambulance account to the capital sta, capital stabil, stabilization account for the new tower truck.
Thank you. Any further discussion on Article Thirteen as presented? Seeing none, all in favor of Article Thirteen as presented, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Article Thirteen passes. Article Fourteen, Chief.
I move the town vote to appropriate and transfer from account number two-two-two-three-one-eight-three-five-four-two-seven-zero ambulance receipts reserved for appropriation to account number one-two-two-zero-six-zero-zero-three-five-eight-five-zero new equipment, the sum of eight thousand five hundred and twenty-three dollars and eighty-seven cents.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made seconded. Chief for discussion if any?
This is to replace three outdated automatic external defibrillators for the police department.
Thank you. Any further discussion on Article Fourteen as presented? Seeing none, all in favor of Article Fourteen as presented, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Article Fourteen passes. Article Fifteen, Chief.
I move the town vote to appropriate and transfer from account number two-two-two-three-one-eight-three-five-four-two-seven-zero ambulance receipts reserved for appropriation to account number one-two-two-zero-six-zero-zero-four-five-eight-five-zero new equipment, the sum of one hundred and thirty-three thousand two hundred and thirty-nine dollars, to purchase twenty-three sets, twenty-three sets of structural firefighting PPE, or personal protective equipment, and twenty-eight sets of non-structural PPE.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made seconded. Chief for discussion if any?
Yeah, so our structural PPE, the gear we wear into building fires, or structure fires, is approaching its ten-year expiration date. And I also wanted to get twenty-eight sets of non-structural gear. Our structural firefighting gear contains PFOS, which is an oncocytogen that causes cancer, and there's no need for us to be wearing structural firefighting gear on every call, unless it's absolutely necessary. However, we do need gear for, you know, woods fires, or motor vehicle entrapment, where we have to, you know, use the jaws of life to remove patients from vehicles.
Thank you, Chief. Any further discussion on Article Fifteen as presented? Seeing none, all in favor of Article Fifteen as presented, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Article Fifteen passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Uh, Mr. Moderator, I know this isn't going to be popular, but I'd like to call for reconsideration on Article, um, Article Eleven on the enterprise fund. I think, for the majority of us here tonight, nobody knows what's in this article. Very few, if any. I think if we put this off until the June of town meeting, it's not going to affect anybody, it's not going to change anything. But I think we at least have the decency to be able to read this article, see what surprises, if any, are in it. Enterprise funds can be a dangerous thing. We could end up paying for a lot more than nothing.
All right, procedurally, I might defer to town council for a second, because under a motion to reconsideration, and I know you, Jim, you have to be in the support of that argument to call for the motion to reconsideration, under town meeting times.
It's a majority vote.
Yeah, but what I'm saying, though, the proponent of the motion to reconsideration has to have voted in favor of it to then reconsider it, under town meeting time, if you, if you looked at it under reconsideration, which, which I know you declared unanimous, so I don't have a problem with it. So for the motion to reconsideration, we now can take a vote on that, but it's a majority.
I don't believe there has to be any rationale, really, just going to.
But it has to, but it's a majority vote.
Majority.
Has to be the majority vote of.
Of the board, yeah. All right, so, so, and you allowed to do it because we're still in the same net. If it's carried over tomorrow, like to tomorrow, I would have probably denied it, because you don't have the same people. So Mr. Whitefeller has made a motion to reconsider Article Eleven. Article Eleven, and just to clarify, all that, if my understanding is right, established the North Bedford Street Sewer District as an enterprise fund, correct? That's all it did?
Yes.
So I think, I think, I understand what Mr. Whitefeller is saying. We don't know what's in it, or what's going to be in it. Is that what the idea is?
Yeah, we don't know what's in the article. I think had this article been printed in the warrant, we've had, a lot of us would have had time to read it and see what's there. I think everybody's voting on something. They have no idea what it is.
Okay.
Mr. Moderator?
This is town council.
If setting up a stabilization fund really gives a dedicated place for these funds to come into, like an enterprise fund, I'm sorry. An enterprise fund means that the money is coming in, will go specifically to that sewer district, rather than potentially the money coming in and diverting to the general fund. So it actually protects the sewer revenue and makes sure that it goes to what has already been voted by prior town meetings, debt for these sewer projects.
But enterprise funds, if they're not totally funded, also fall back to the town to pick up the slack. So we could be out there for four or five million dollars.
It's, it would still come down to a meeting of, a vote of town meeting.
I think, John, we have the right to know that. See it in printing. I think everyone here tonight would like to know exactly what's in there.
So here's what we'll do. We're going to, we're going to take a vote on your motion to reconsider. Now, I'm going to trust my eyes to some extent. So I'm not going to do it by voice vote. But what I, so those people sitting up there to my left, straight ahead, you, you cannot vote. And this, you're the non-voting, there's a pink paper on the side. So all in favor of Mr. Whitefeller's motion to reconsider, say aye. I mean, raise your hand, I'm sorry. It's going to be close. You know what? My eyes are good, but it's going to be close. So I'm going to ask the tellers to come forward. These people have been sworn in before the meeting. And you put your hands out for a minute. I'm going to have the tellers, the tellers come forward.
Mr. Moderator, I was, uh, I'll, I'll recuse myself. Sorry about that.
So Mr. Whitefeller made a motion to reconsider. He's also made, in essence, a motion to lay on the tail. Basically do what we did with some of the other ones, to put it onto the June meeting. So all in favor of that motion, raise their hand. And keep them raised so that the tellers can go through. All opposed of motion to reconsider, raise your hand, please. All opposed? To reconsider the motion, raise your hand, please. I'm blaming my poor right side on the lighting. So the motion to reconsider carries one-twenty-five-to-forty-four, but, but town council just indicated to me that we need to do a separate vote to lay it on the table, basically putting it over to June 5th like this. So I'm going to, all in favor of putting this over until June 5th, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Uh, passes, passes by majority. So we're all set. Thank you. That was motion made by Mr. Whitefeller. All right, where do we leave off? Article, Article Seventeen. Mrs. Spigot?
No, it's me.
Ms. Julius, Board of Selectmen.
Mr. Moderator, I move Article Seventeen as printed.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made seconded. Uh, Ms. Julius for discussion if any?
Uh, this is an article that sets up parameters for door-to-door solicitation.
Sounds good to me. Um, any further discussion, any further discussion on Article Seventeen as presented? Yep, come on up.
Hi, Cindy Scudder, Bridge Street. Um, I would like to propose that we add that I know they're supposed to have the permit from the town on their person when they go door-to-door, but how about if they have it hanging around, so you can see the person walking up, has this thing, this permit. it hanging around so you can see the person walking up has this thing, this permit that has been given to them by the town hanging around their neck so it can be seen right away.
Okay, so you want to, you would basically want to amend it to include town issued ID? Does the town issue some type of license or some type of...
Right, so under Section 8F, I believe is probably where we're referencing, on page 22 at the bottom, so each salesperson shall carry the town of East Bridgewater door-to-door sales permit at all times while engaged in door-to-door sales. We'd have to, I mean, we're trying to do this on the fly, so to speak, in the sense of, when we vote a bylaw, we have to vote specific language as part of this, tonight. So, I'm not su, you know, like I said, we're doing this on the fly. You know, I don't think we want to say each person shall carry around their neck. Shall have, shall be visible, shall carry the town of East Bridgewater...
I said carry and display.
Carry and display, Carol mentioned. Carol, so we would say, uh, carry and display the town of East Bridgewater, was that good?
Yes, because as it's written here, it says, "Shall display upon request by the police." I want it displayed all the time.
Okay, so under 8F, you'd like to amend the motion to say each salesperson shall carry the town of East Bridgewater, shall carry and display the town of East Bridgewater door-to-door sales permit?
Yes.
Is that good, Bob?
That's fine.
Do you want me to make that amendment? Do you want Cindy?
No, actually, she's going to, she, she, I'm going to tell her right now she's going to do it. You're going to make a motion to amend to add 8F, the words "and" display after "carry." So, you just made that motion, correct?
Yes.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Second. So, we got a first vote on the, allowing the amendment. All in favor, any further discussion on the amendment that's been proposed? Don't go anywhere just yet. We're only going to give you your due just. Seeing no opposition, so I will take the vote. All in favor of allowing the motion to be amended, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So, so now we're going to vote, that passed. Now, we're going to vote on the motion as amended. Mike, do you have something? Mike, can you come up, because...
Sure, Section 8...
I think...
And the G, it says town of...
Mr. Moderator?
Hold on a second.
I'll make the correction to that section. I was just again, there's a, there's a misprint there in Section G where it says the town of Yarmouth.
Well, we always hope you can be down the case.
Town of East Bridgewater, I, you know, I beg...
So, so, so that, so, all right, so...
So, we'll correct it.
Ms. Nelson, are you talking about the amended motion?
No.
All right.
I want to talk about the motion when we get there.
Next one? Oh, I'm sorry, did you want to speak on this?
I don't want to talk about her amendment. I want to talk on this motion, this article.
Yeah, yes, go ahead.
Uh, Lois Nelson, Stonebridge Way. I'm, read, "salesperson," and I have absolutely no problem with let's have the salespeople identify themselves. What happens with the kids with the football stickers and people that are trying to get signatures for papers or to get an article on the town warrant or something like that? If they're going door-to-door, is that a problem?
For the...
Mr. Sealy.
The council may be able to answer on the kids coming from door-to-door, but political organizations and religious organizations, we cannot regulate their ability to go door-to-door. You can still have signs up saying no soliciting or anything. That's still allowable and they can't come to your door, but we can't, under, given First Amendment rights, we can't regulate political and religious speech, including going door-to-door.
Okay, just wanted to check.
But, um...
Well, we also, we also, if you look at Section 2B, it specifically says to regulate door-to-door by licensing sales agents. I don't think anybody considers the football team with their sticker drive or political people getting sales, I mean, they do try to sell stuff, obviously politicians, but they're not sales agents in the truest sense. So, now, I, uh, yes, sir?
Just to prolong it as long as we can. Under Section F, where it says, "Shall display said current upon request by any police officer," then there's a period. Should that be a comma? Should it be police officer, town official, or any person present? Because with a period, it kind of just ends that sentence and, so, did you change that yet? You changed G, right, Carol?
See, sales and shall display said current upon request by any police officer, town official...
Can you make a period, a comma, probably, right?
Yeah, that'd just be a comma.
Right.
But that, that, that won't affect, that's just a grammatical correction that has to be made. So, I, I kind of forgot, so we, did we, did we actually, we did have a vote on accepting her amendments. So, now we're voting to accept the motion as amended, to making this, incorporating this. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so Article, let me get back to the number, 17 passes by majority. Article 18. Mr. Sheedy.
Moderator, I make a motion that, that the town vote to approve Article 18 as...
David, your mic's not on.
Moderator, I move that the town vote to approve Article 18 as written in the warrant.
I have a motion to have a second. Motion made seconded, Mr. Sheedy, for discussion, if any.
This is just an article to get the proper language into the state that we did when we first put this article out. It's just correcting what's in bold print. It's just a correction.
Thank you. Any further discussion on Article 18 as presented? Seeing none, all in favor of Article 18, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Article 18 passes. Article 19. Ms. Julius.
Thank you. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to approve Article 19 as written in the warrant.
I have a motion to have a second. Motion made seconded, Ms. Julius, for discussion, if any.
Uh, this is an attempt to change our name from the Board of Selectmen to the Select Board. Many of the other cities and towns in Massachusetts have done this to remove gender from our title, and we'd like to see that happen here.
Okay, any further discussion on Article 19 as presented? Seeing none, all in favor of Article 19, say aye.
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 Opposed? Article, Article 19 passes by majority. Article 20, Mrs. McGowan.
That's Carol.
I think, Mr. Moderator, I'll do that one. It's tied to Article 19.
Yeah, what, what's different? Am I missing something? It looks like the same thing.
Yes, so, we're doing sort of the Belt and Suspenders approach here, where we are changing our own bylaws, but then also getting ratification from the general legislature, because obviously the general laws still say Board of Selectmen.
Okay. So, this is more of a procedural motion that goes along with, uh, so I still need the motion in a second.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend the general bylaws of the town of East Bridgewater by replacing "selectmen" and "board of selectmen" with the term "select board" and/or "select board member" in each and every instance in which said terms appear.
I have a motion to have a second. Motion made seconded. Any further discussion? Oh, you're all set, Ms. Julius.
No, I'm all set.
All right, any further discussion on Article 20 as presented? Seeing none, all in favor of Article 20, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Article 20 passes by majority. Article 21, I'm going to, I believe I'm going to have a motion to pass over that article. Is that correct, Mr. Sheedy?
That's correct. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town pass over Article 21.
I have a motion to have a second. Motion made seconded, for discussion, if any, Mr. Sheedy.
This is just something we took a look at, but after careful consideration, we think it's fine to weigh it in.
You certainly can't, you do have to come to the mic and identify yourself.
I, I want to know why, just for my, why did they want to choose them rather than have the town elect them?
Well, that's what they're, that's what they're, actually, what they're doing is, they're passing it over, they're not going to do it.
I know, but I just want to know the reason why. They'll pass it over and bring it up again in June.
Oh, well, no, this cannot be bracken, John. This is being passed over. We're, this is being, gone away. Passing it over takes it out...
We're never going to do that again.
I, I can never tell you never, but right now...
We want to do it again this year.
Right now, it's coming, it's coming off and not being discussed. I think they, I think Mr. Sheedy said they looked at it and figured, why broke it, why fix it if it's not broke? So, all in favor, all in favor of Article 20, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Article 21 passes by majority. All right, so, the next, 22 to 34, we have to do 22 by itself because it falls under a different law. So, I'll entertain a motion for Article 22.
I'll make a motion to pass 22 as written.
I have a motion to have a second. Motion made seconded. For discussion, if any, Mr. McGowan.
Yeah, this is to see if the body will accept a public way of the following streets and portions thereof laid out in the warrant.
Thank you. Any further discussion on Article 22 as presented? Just take the two-thirds vote.
Thank you, Mr. Pliss.
Yes, come on, you got to come to the mic. I'm sorry, but we need to, you need to introduce yourself and your address.
Mr. Moderator, I'm Mary Sumore, Lorraine Drive. I'm, I'm not sure if we're doing this whole article as all the streets inclusive, or are we doing them separately, each street?
No, this one we're doing separately because it falls under a different statute.
Okay.
The next ones, 23 through 34, we're going to do it as, we're going to do it as one. And we, but, but people, if they haven't talked about particular feet, they can. But this one, we have to do separate because it falls under a different statute.
Okay, understood.
That's the only reason.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion on Article 22 as presented? Seeing none, all in favor of Article 20, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Article 22 passes. Now, I will entertain a motion from the selectmen. Mrs. Mc, uh... So, Ms. McGowan, remember, I will entertain a motion to, uh, 22, 23 to 34.
Yeah, I move the town vote to approve Article 23 to 34 as written in the warrant.
I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Any further discussion or discussion, if any, Mr. McGowan, for...
Same as the last. We are trying to accept the public way, the following streets and the portions thereof as written in the warrant.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion for Article 20 to 34? Mr. Weinerfellow.
Mr. Moderator, I believe there's still several streets, roads, bypasses, whatever, that are still not on this list. Is, are they going to be handled later, or what's the story on those?
I mean, Mr. Sealy, have you worked with that on, on the other votes?
I'd be working, yes, with John Haynes and also the planning board and town council. We should be bringing those additional streets as long as we're ready, have the proper documentation and such to bring them at a future town meeting. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weinerfellow. Any further discussion on Articles 22 to 34? Mr. Gardner.
So, so real quickly here, because a couple of the citizens sitting behind me have questions here. These are all streets that were approved by the planning board under subdivision control, some dating back into the 60s, 70s, and 80s. Every one of these streets, the developer defaulted on their requirement to finish those streets and provide an as-built plan to the town of East Bridgewater. Our recent state, local legislation on behalf of the town of East Bridgewater allows us to now accept those roads based on those subdivision plans that are on file at the Registry of Deeds. This group, as I think was just somewhat explained, is the beginning of maybe 30-some-odd streets altogether. This is the first group of those that will be presented at town meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Gardner. Any further discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Moderator, I'd like to just make a quick statement. I want to, I want to personally thank Chris Kenny, attorney, for helping us find this, this law that we were able to put into, put into motion. It's been a, a long road, as I'm sure a lot of the residents out here know, and thankfully from Mr. Kenny's due diligence and hard work with the board, we will get this done.
Thank you, Chris. And as you recall, last town meeting, some of these came up, and we, and I know that town council, they would do what they could to get them allowed. So, we're making progress. Any further discussion on the articles presented? This does require a two-thirds. All in, seeing no further discussion, all in favor of Articles 22 to 34, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, we go to Article... 36. Mr. Gardner, Planning Board. This actually just requires a majority. I think your books say two-thirds, super majority, but two of its state law changed two years ago. It only requires a majority.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to move Article 36 to see if the town votes to amend the current town of East Bridgewater zoning map by changing certain portions of, portions of the existing zoning districts from industrial one, residence one, and business three to residence three, thereby expanding the existence, existing residence three district. The subject area is bounded by central, uh, North Central Street to the north, West Union Street to the north, and the from the railroad right away to the south-southeast, and is more specifically shown on the including zoning map excerpt. I'll take any action relative thereto.
I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Just, just, there was a, there was a error, the word, and this does not require amendment. In your books, I think it says the subject area is bounded by Central Street, it should say North Central Street. Am I correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so that's, that's just, that would have effect, but he's presenting it as North Central Street. More for discussion, if any.
Uh, report to the planning board, which was filed with the town clerk earlier today. At the planning board meeting last Monday night, the planning board voted for in favor when opposed to recommend adoption of this own bylaw, zoning map change, as it, number one, it expands the existing, uh, residence three district. It's an, makes it an integral component of the residence three district and allow access into the residence three district from North Central Street and from West Union Street without having to go through what is currently several homes that are in undeveloped space that's zone residence one. So, that would make it in, in better compliance with our master plan for the town.
Thank you. Sarah.
Yeah, Scott Blood, North Central Street. My question is, why all of a sudden we're taking our residential one area and changing it into a residential three? It's been like that forever. I live in that area. If you wanted to change B three to residential one, I have no problem with it, but I have a serious issue with all of a sudden taking an area that's already residential one and turning it into a three.
Let's see, maybe we can get some discussion, maybe get an answer to the planning board. Mr. Gardner.
So, I think the answer to that is, according to the assessors' record, there's already multiple homes within those districts that are changing, that are already used as multifamily homes that are protected as grandfathered under zoning. The other part of that is that the, the land to be redevelopment, which would be primarily the, the Smith Function Hall property, as well as the undeveloped property to the, on, off of West Union Street, is already zoned in, in majority residence three. But the, the problem we have right now from a planning board standpoint is its access is through a residence one frontage to get to the residence three zone. So, the intent is to try and make that all a single contiguous residence three zone.
Thank you. Mr. Blood, if you want to wait a second, I'm going to recognize this gentleman.
Good evening. Rob Waterman, West Union Street. So, R three, that's essentially, uh, current R three, I think, what is there, less than 10 residences in that zone? The remainder of it is all wetlands. I believe that's correct.
Uh, Miss, I'm going to ask, I'm going to ask, Mr. Gardner, I hate to, by your planning board expertise, is...
I know, a, a, actually, that's incorrect. The remainder of that is not wetlands. We've already seen a preliminary plan that shows three multifamily homes, six units each, and the, and the rear part of that with the frontage going through partly the industrial zone out onto West Union Street where the single-family homes are and where there's open frontage to get into that rear. I, I think the important thing to note is that land sits, the land that we've seen on the plan that's already been engineered sits some 10 to 12 feet above the river, and it's not flagged wetlands.
It was flagged wetlands prior to the most recent appeal to change it, and I was at the previous...
at the previous meeting when that issue was initially brought up roughly maybe eight to 10 years ago, and at that point, you expressed the desire to get those residences in B3 into accordance, and not to bring the remainder of that neighborhood into their accordance. What has changed since then?
Well, I think the engineered plan that we saw 18 months ago clearly shows that the land from the proposed development, which already showed multiple single, multiple six-unit buildings on it, is clearly well above the wetlands line by a substantial amount.
So what changed? Because it didn't use to be. The last time, the last time you-
It's been certi-
Prior meeting you had on this subject-
It's been certified, it's been certified by a wetlands, a wetlands delineation to be well above the wetlands line, that's all I can tell you.
Thank you. I'm going to go to Mr., he does, all these suggestions, that that's what they go by what he has, he, I'm going to let Mr. Blood go now, I'm going to get Mr. Blood respond, you can stay there for a second, and then this young lady wants to move up. Mr. Blood.
So, I understand there's already apartments and such inside that zone and they're grandfathered, that's fine. I do have a problem with people assuming that TJ Smith and the old trolley bond, which is a trolley bond, not a bus bond, that's a business zone, and I have no problem if you want to turn it into an R1, but I do have a problem, because I live next door to that, turning it into condos. And the wetlands that you're supposedly talking about is a national grid right away because the high line passes through that majority of that R3, you're trying to turn it into a, that R1, you're trying to turn it into an R3.
Mr. Waterman, Mr. Waterman, do you have, can I have another, Mr. Waterman, you, do you want to respond?
Uh, no, I generally agree with what he's saying, although the easement, powerline easement that runs along the mat field, I assume that's what you're referring to, that's all I believe Mr. Gardner could probably tell you, is that still in the, that's in the flood zone? No?
Mr. Gardner, do you know the answer to that, and then I want to move on, because this young lady's been waiting.
But that, the actual, the Edison easement that runs through there, it runs roughly parallel to the river, extremely close to the river, and that, most of that is in the flood zone, but that's well below the land level that we're talking about here.
I understand that.
All right.
I'm just saying that farther, you know, to correct the other gentleman's observation, but that, I'm just concerned that most of the residences in that neighborhood already have water in their basement every time it rains, and the suggestion that all of a sudden it's not wetlands, I think the majority of the residents in that neighborhood would disagree with that.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Lisa, I live on West Union Street as well. The Conservation Commission had forwarded a report, a summary, at their suggestion, then I followed up requesting it, following a meeting, that was about the delineation, the redelineation of those wetlands, and something that was in the report that included the approval of the redelineation, and I'm not sure if this has been done yet, and so maybe somebody here can answer to that, there was something called the ILSF, which was isolated locations subject to flooding, and so that speaks to what was already mentioned prior about people's basements being flooded that are in that wetlands area, and that there should not be any development or permit, this is in the report, to take place until that has been followed through on, and so I don't know if that has been, the isolated locations subject to flooding.
And that was to the Conserva-, is anybody from the Conservation Commission here? Just to see if you can guess, just if we can get any information concerning what you're asking. Show them.
Sorry, thank you. It's isolated land subject to flooding, and we would have to look into it, I'm not at liberty right now to speak one way or the other, and our agent is not, I don't believe is here, so we could, we will look into it and get back to you on that.
So does it stand that no development would take place or permit would be, you know, there would, people would need to know about it, we would get letters of intent, I was surprised that we didn't receive anything about being a butters, because years ago, we received notice as a butters from Shaw's, which is a half a mile down the road and around the corner, another quarter of a mile, when they were doing development, and we received no notice about things that are going to happen on the wetlands across the street from us, so that's a concern, so I'm hoping that we will be notified.
You will be, there is no formal application to conservation regarding this, this right now is just a zoning change, so the plan that Mr. Gardner is referring to has not been reviewed by conservationist yet.
Thank you.
I do have one other thing I wanted to bring up, just to put it out there, because I realize that there is mandated housing that needs to take place, increased housing in a lot of different areas, and we're trying to address that, so, and that is something I think somebody was going to mention, was looking at places that already have infrastructure behind, I don't know exact, I don't know about the property, I'm just throwing it out there, like behind Dewhurst, where they, because people say it'll share the burden to bring in taxpayer, you know, more developments, but I don't think it does, I think it adds because they have to use the resources to make new infrastructure, so why not build where there's, for additional housing in places where there already is some infrastructure, like we did with the high school, rather than doing it out by Leland Farm. And then, one final thing to bring up is, when we're doing this additional development, to consider the open space that we could still maintain somehow, you know, a park. Any development have a park, you know, that could help be maintained by, by the, by the town. We found with the pandemic, with all the additional places that were put outside, at restaurants, people are keeping them, most of them, people want to get outside, so I hope that that could be something that the town and the citizens and the offices can focus on when there's development that goes on, thank you.
Mr. Blood, you have anything else to add?
The only thing I have left to add-
Can you speak to the mic?
The only thing I have left to add is, why all of a sudden it was a push to do this, and who has what to gain from it.
Right this lady first, then?
Yes, Ms. Waterman.
Yeah.
Donna Mishazik, West Union Street, and my understanding is, there are two large multifamily homes, projects going to be built right on West Union Street within a half a mile of each other. That was my understanding when I went to the planning board meeting the other night, and I just happened to know about it because someone at the senior center gave me an article in the newspaper, and I'd like to know too, why the people that are affected by this zoning change weren't notified to go to the planning meeting.
Okay.
Nobody on the street knew about it.
No, and I understand, and I, and I don't, I know that the meetings get posted, I don't know what else the planning board does, but by law they have to post them, and it's posted in town hall, I know they do that, I don't know what else they do. Some towns you have to give the butters notice of it, I don't know what they do, as far as doing. But today, so that's a topic I think you take up with the planning board itself. Today, we're just voting on whether or not to approve this zoning change, nothing else, nothing, we're just, their proposal is to basically convert basically all that area into an R3.
Okay, may I make a motion, Mr. Moderator?
You're going to make, you're going to make a substitute motion, what's your motion?
I would like to make a motion to leave the zoning the way it is.
Okay, so that, so that's already been done, so his motion loses, if his motion loses, the zoning stays the way it is. So we're going to vote-
All right.
-up or down on it.
I thought he added some extra language.
So we're going to vote up or down on his motion. If his motion passes, then it'd be, then it gets enacted, if his motion fails, it stays the way it is.
Okay.
Okay? Mr. Whitefellow, you had your hand up, and I know you want to, Mr. Gardner, while he's getting him, Mr. Gardner?
Yeah, just, just a quick comment to address several comments that were made just a second ago, and that is, number one, under Massachusetts land use laws, all infrastructure improvements that would support any of this have to be completed, paid for in full by the developer, whether that be storage requirements, whether it be septic system requirements, whether it be new road requirements, all of those by law have to be paid for by the developer. The second part of the question is, open space in the state of Massachusetts is dictated by how much a local municipality wants to purchase land from private landowners to have open space. The town cannot, and the planning board cannot zone land to be open space because that's not allowed use under the zoning act in the state of Massachusetts.
Thank you, Mr. Gardner. I'm going to have Mr. Whitefellow, this gentleman, then we're going to move, Mr. Whitefellow.
Mr. Moderator, let's get down to brass tacks. We have a watering ban in town, it's been on the books now, permanent water ban for at least 10 years. We have a traffic situation that you can't get there from, from here. You can go any day of the week, seven days a week, traffic is backed up from the center beyond the fire station, almost back to the river. This is constant. You have a school building that you're sitting in that we spent $77 million for, and it's inadequate the month after they moved in. You got an article tonight about the central school looking for a lot of repairs, guess what, folks, that's next on the books. You put an area this size into residential three, it's not going to be your three families that we're all familiar with. Take a right up Route 18, and look what's been done up there, Route 18, by the way, if you haven't been up there, is now a four-lane road. The complexes up there are multi-hundred residences. Bridgewater's talking about another 200-house development, that traffic comes through here. Think of this seriously before you do this, it's not the people that live in that area, and God bless them, my heart goes out to them, but it's every single person that lives in this town.
Sir, you have the final word.
Edward Pearson, 243 North Central Street, as far as talking about the water problem, people can go by, I pop, I pump a half a million gallons out of my yacht because of the town building the road up, the neighbors putting in new septic systems, which I call Mount Mesupius, to each one of them, because it all pushes water, you take the land across the street, behind those houses, it's a stream, it really is dry out there, and you decide to make that a zone three for multifamilies, you're just taking away the sponge. That side of town is wet because of clay, and all you're going to do is make it worse. And I'll remember one thing that John Delano said when he was the engineer in this town, you get sewer in this town and I'll put a house where there's six inches of standing water, we don't need that.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, so, I'm going to call a question to vote, so what I'm going to do, if you're in favor of this, all, so this requires a two-thirds. I think what I'll do, because of two-thirds, I meant to tell us, I'm going to, I'm going to execute-
It's just a majority.
Oh. Oh, I'm sorry, I did change the majority, it's the one they changed a couple of years ago, the state did, thank you, Chris. I still think, given the nature, everyone has a tell us come forward, Mr. Gardner, you're going to sit this one out? Mr. Kelly, and the others, Mr. Whitefellow, could you guys come up while I, so I can do this vote? So again, I'm going to ask all in favor to raise their hands and keep them raised until we get to count. All in favor of the article which is changing the zoning, so you're voting for what's presented before you, if you're against it, don't vote in favor, don't say aye, so all in favor of the article which would result in the zoning change, raise their hand. All in favor? I'm going to be bold, let me see, let me see the opposition, all opposed, I'm going to be bold and say it's majority, thank you. So the article fails, so the zoning stays the same.
I'm sorry, you're wanting to get words together, we can't hear you.
I, okay, all, it did not pass, so the zoning stays the same, the way it is right now. Ms. Julius.
Mr. Moderator, I move to see if the town will vote to accept from Karen L. Thompson a parcel of land described as Assessors Map 92, lot 62B, measuring 1,000, 10300, 135278 square feet on Highland Street.
I have a motion, I have a second. Motion made, seconded. Ms. Julius, for discussion if any.
Charlie?
Or Mr. Sealy, I'm going to refer to you.
Um, the land was offered to the town, the alternative is always to let it go through tax tail and foreclosure, which ends up being far more expensive for the town, we've got to pay more attorney fees and such. In this case, the taxes are up to date, and we should accept the donation simply because it's less expensive for the town to do it that way than to go through the alternate method.
Thank you, Mr. Sealy. Any further discussion on Article 37 as presented? Yeah, it's a two-thirds vote. Seeing none, all in favor of Article 37, present, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passed by unanimous. I'll take a motion to adjourn this meeting until June 5th. At 7:30, I was just informed, June 5th, 7:30, all in favor?
Seven, seven.
I don't know, this gentleman's telling me 7:30, we have the special at 7, don't we? We have a special carried over, don't we?
At 7.
And we're going to have some entertainment that night.
Yeah.
The music, the music association, as they can come and perform. So we'll just, I'll entertain a motion to continue the meeting until June 5th at 7, it might not start until 7:30, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, have a nice night, don't forget town election is this Saturday, I believe.